Good evening. I'm hanging a couple of just outside with Denver, so they were like, oh, you know, we're pretty sure we'd deploy. So it was like, okay. That's the definition of Denver.
I got seven o'clock. Good.
These goes perfect.
Good evening. I'd like to call the regular Borough Council meeting of July 18th, 2022 to order. This meeting has been properly advertised in the Home News Tribune of January 7th, 2022, according to public law in 1975, Chapter 231. Will the court please call the roll?
Council President Zambrana?
Here.
Councilwoman Newbauer?
Here. Over the phone.
Councilwoman O'Donnell?
Here.
Councilwoman Peretti?
Here.
Councilwoman Potter?
Here.
And for the record, Councilwoman Revolinsky has an excused absence.
Okay, thank you. Please join me in a moment of silence and let's move to our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution of this land, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Now, I would like to introduce McKinley Mertz from Higher Rule and Associates, our Borough Planner. She, I appreciate her pinching in for Mr. Barry, who had a conflict, an emergency conflict this evening, and she's going to talk about some options regarding the Main Street Firehouse and area rehabilitation. Good evening, McKinley, how are you?
Hi, Mayor, I'm good. Thank you for having me. John apologizes for not being here. He did say to tell you he wishes he was here instead of where he is, so. But yes, so John, I believe everyone has a copy. He sent a memo out last Wednesday on the 13th outlining what we're here to talk about tonight. Of course, our subject this evening is the Firehouse property on Main Street and the adjoining properties next to it, the parking lot and the two buildings that are currently being used by the Milltown Historical Society, and what to do with those two properties moving forward in terms of development, redevelopment, rezoning. The two options he laid out in this memo, the first was to rezone the property into the B1 zone, which would put it really into the same consistent standards as the properties around it, kind of across the street and down a little bit. That would allow for that property to be rezo-- I'm sorry, redeveloped, I'm going to say redeveloped with a lowercase r, to be reused for any of the uses that are currently permitted in your B1 zone, all of the retail uses that are allowed there. Any new property owner could develop a new building, rehabilitate the old building, do anything that they wish with that site in conformance with what your downtown really already allows. The, that would be a very discreet action, just focusing on your Firehouse. If you would like to take a more comprehensive approach to your downtown, the second option we have laid out for you is to do a rehabilitation study of not only the Firehouse property and the parking lot in the two historical buildings, but also, as is on page two of the map that John provided with you, really looking at, and it doesn't have to be this corridor that he laid out here, but really the entire, what we're calling Milltown's downtown stretch, and taking a comprehensive approach to ways to help rehabilitate the downtown, some of the either vacant properties or properties that could use a little bit of extra support. This option would look at not just the Firehouse, but really this whole stretch. And it's, again, that, what that whole stretch means, those, what properties would be included, that would be part of the next step if you were to pursue this. We would come back and John would enter that conversation with the council about how many properties and which properties you wish to include in that. Now, rehabilitation, the option here, the differences between this and zoning to rezone it, a rehabilitation option would give the council a little bit more control over what happens here. It's a little broader than a rezoning. So in a, again, in a rezoning, you can't have standards for one particular site. I'm sure you all know that's what we call spot zoning. But in rehabilitation, if we designate an entire corridor, we can break that down into its own different land use districts and get as specific as a single site for what new development standards and uses might apply to that. Now, I know that this council is very familiar with redevelopment. That's a different animal. We're not talking about that. Rehabilitation is, it still provides a little bit of additional control, but condemnation is not an option, and you can only do short-term tax abatement, abatements. And when I say short-term, I mean five years, as opposed to the 30 years you would get with the redevelopment. Other minor differences that are included in that is that the town or redevelopment agency isn't designating the redevelop, or an individual property owner could rehabilitate their site pursuant to the standards of whatever plan we come up with. So that would be, really, that's the bulk of it. I mean, there's obviously specifics that go into the process here, but those are your two options, or the discreet, which would be the rezoning of the two properties, or the slightly broader, more comprehensive review of what, of what your downtown entails. That's really it. I'm happy to answer any questions associated with that.
I'll open it up.
I got one question. So are we talking about the area, just to make, generalize, broad, from Washington and Maine up to Coulthard?
That could be our starting point. I think that would be a good place to begin and then see, now, when you do, when you designate an area for rehabilitation, one of the criteria is the age of the, the housing stock and infrastructure. Sometimes it's easiest to do that by census block, but if we're including broader properties that wouldn't necessarily need rehabilitation associated with it, they, they're still permitted to, to maintain whatever development status that they currently have. But, but generally speaking, that would be the, the quarter that what we would begin to look at, yeah.
And, and just so everyone here is aware, folks that are watching on TV, this isn't about taking people's property. It's not eminent domain, it's nothing like that. It's actually working on a plan, collaborative plan to kind of not just focus on one piece of property or section of property, but a broader area.
Absolutely correct. So condemnation, eminent domain is not permitted in any way, shape, or form with this option. And in fact, this is a good option for homeowners because it provides homeowners that might want to help rehabilitate their own property. It, it provides options for them as well.
Anyone else have any questions?
I have one. When you mentioned that if we just rezone, it would be B1, what exactly are the businesses that are acceptable in, in B1?
Those are your typical retail, small-scale retail that you have along your B1. So we're, we're talking smaller general services, sales and service essentially. I believe restaurants are permitted within that zone as well. Residential is not. My memory is that that's just the B3 zone. So, so mostly your small-scale downtown resident, uh, sorry, retail.
Just to confirm, if, if the borough were to decide on a rehabilitation, would that inhibit the ability of any property owner to continue using the property the way it is?
Absolutely not. Everyone could keep going as they are today. They don't have to take advantage, they don't have to even pay attention to it if they don't want to.
And if the borough were to pursue that and adopt a redevelopment ordinance, unfortunately, that's the word they use for it, even if it's rehabilitation, would that typically be an overlay ordinance and the underlying zoning would remain?
That, that is typically how it happens. And, and your counsel is correct that after we do the rehabilitation study, the next step would be what is called a redevelopment plan. It's confusing that they call them the same thing, but it is, again, completely different than the redevelopment process, and it is typically done as an overlay. So underlying zoning could, could remain and continue.
And the study would be the next step?
Right. So the next step in this process would be to, and I'll differ to your counsel, but basically to, if you were to go that route, you would pass the resolution authorizing the investigation of this area. And that's where John would come back to you with various properties that he considered appropriate, and you would together decide the, the area that you would like to include in this. And the criteria, as I mentioned, one of them being the age of the housing stock and the infrastructure, that would be all considered within that next step.
Any cost estimate that you can give for this study?
For the study, about $5,000.
Thank you.
And the plan would depend on where the study goes, basically.
And what's the timeframe if it was, if it was a resolution, timeframe to get the study?
John's prepared to come back as soon as possible, as soon as you pass the resolution for actually developing the study. We're, we're looking at a few months. It's, it's not a very intensive process for that.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thanks, everyone, for having me.
All right. Now we will move on to approval of minutes. May I have a motion and a second for the approval of the minutes?
So moved.
From June 27th, 2022. Sorry.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilwoman O'Donnell, second by Councilman Potter. Any comments or corrections? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any opposed? Okay. Next on the agenda is comments from the audience on resolutions. If any member of the public wishes to speak on any of the resolutions, please identify yourself to the clerk and say your name and address for the record. These comments are limited to resolutions listed on the agenda. Seeing none, I will close audience comments and move on to the bill list. Will the clerk please read by title only the Bill Resolution 169-2022?
Resolution 169, 2022, is authorizing the payment of bills, claims, and statements against the Borough of Milltown in the total amount of $2,834,882.43, and I hope that everyone can confirm they received that correction. Right.
You've heard the reading of this resolution. What is your pleasure?
Madam Mayor, I move that the bill list be approved this night?
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Potter, second by Council President Zambrana. Any discussion? Will, excuse me, will the clerk please call the roll?
Council President Zambrana?
Aye.
Councilwoman Newbauer?
Aye.
Councilwoman O'Donnell?
Aye.
Councilman Peretti?
Aye.
Councilman Potter?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next, we'll go on to the introduction of resolutions. When voting on resolutions, all matters listed under the consent agenda are considered to be routine in nature, and having been reviewed by the Borough Council, will be enacted by one motion. Any item may be removed from the consent agenda at the request of any council member, and if so removed, will be treated as a separate matter. Any items requiring expenditure are supported by a certification of availability of funds. Are there any questions, or does anyone want to have any resolution pulled from the consent agenda?
Madam Mayor, I just have one question on one resolution, and it's 175. Just, you know, specifically, is there a reason why we're passing this resolution to authorize the hours? Is it to just confirm them?
Would you like me to speak to that?
Sure.
Okay. So I did check with our Recreation Director about that resolution, and it is reconfirming hours that are existing, and it is doing so to allow for enforcement as needed for use of the park during those hours.
Sounds good, thank you.
Anyone else? So, um, there being no request to pull any of the resolutions, will the clerk please read the consent resolution?
Whereas, pursuant to the rules of council, the council may establish a consent agenda for any regular or special meeting, and whereas the Borough Clerk has posted a consent agenda for this meeting, now therefore be it resolved by the mayor and Borough Council of the Borough of Milltown, County of Middlesex, State of New Jersey, that the consent agenda previously prepared by the Borough Clerk be approved without the necessity of having the individual resolutions read by the Borough Clerk.
You've heard the reading of this resolution. What is your pleasure?
Madam Mayor, I make the motion that these resolutions be adopted.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Potter, second by Councilman Peretti. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Council President Zambrana?
Aye.
Councilwoman Newbauer?
Aye.
Councilwoman O'Donnell?
Aye.
Councilman Peretti?
Aye.
Councilman Potter?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Now we'll move on to an ordinance for public hearing and adoption. This is the public hearing for Ordinance 221514. And since introduction, full copies of Ordinance 221514 are presently posted on the Borough website, on the bulletin board at Borough Hall, and are available at no cost in the offices of municipal clerk between the hours of 8:30 a.m. and 4:00 p.m., Monday through Friday. Clerk Marler, will you please read the ordinance by title only?
221514, a flood preservation ordinance for adoption of the flood plain management regulations of the Borough of Milltown, County of Middlesex, State of New Jersey.
May I have a motion and a second to open the public hearing for Ordinance 221514?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Potter, second by Councilwoman O'Donnell. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The public hearing on Ordinance 221514 is now open to any member of the public who wishes to speak on Ordinance 221514. Seeing none, I will ask for a motion and a second to close the public hearing for Ordinance 221514.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilwoman O'Donnell, second by Councilman Potter. The public hearing, are all in favor?
Aye.
Public hearing for Ordinance 221514 is now closed. May I have a motion and a second to adopt Ordinance 221514?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilwoman O'Donnell, second by Council President Zambrana. Any further questions or comments from the council? Will the court please call the roll?
Council President Zambrana?
Aye.
Councilwoman Newbauer?
Aye.
Councilwoman O'Donnell?
Aye.
Councilman Peretti?
Aye.
Councilman Potter?
Aye.
Motion carries to adopt Resolution 221514?
Thank you. Or, or, or. Now we'll move on to council reports. We'll begin with the Department of Public Safety, Councilwoman Dave Potter.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have four reports this evening. The first one is from the Milltown Police Department. Between June 1st, 2022, and June 30th, 2022, police have responded to 944 calls for service. During this period, police conducted 83 radar, radar details in numerous locations. Police made 111 motor vehicle stops during this period. Thirteen arrests were made, including shoplifting, DWI, possession of heroin, and hindering appreh- apprehension. Police responded to 11 motor vehicle accidents, which included minor injuries. Police have also issued multiple motor vehicle summonses and nuance, nuance violations, attending, arriving, and leaving the car shows on Sundays near Applebee's. Parents and guardians should be reminded that children 17 years of age and under are required by law to wear helmets while riding bicycles, skates, and scooters. Due to the increase in property damage, littering, and otherwise unruly behavior at our borough parks, all parks will close at dusk, with the exception of permitted use. So, Council President Zambrana, that's another reason.
Thank you.
So, yep. Milltown Police Department is currently accepting applications for part-time records clerk, secretary, part-time crossing guards, and part-time police dispatches. Applications are available online at www.milltownnj.org, or in person at the Milltown Borough Clerk's office. Please continue to report suspicious activity, traffic concerns, and non-emergent type calls to 732-828-1100. Emergency and life-threatening calls, please use 911. Residents are reminded to report any concerns or complaints by using the official Borough website, all by, or by calling the Milltown Police directly. The Milltown Police does not monitor and will not react, reply, or respond to comments or complaints posted on any third-party social media sites. Thank you for your cooperation and enjoy the summer. Chief Brian Cannelli. Madam Mayor, my second report is from the Milltown Fire Department. Monthly report for June 2022. There were two drills, one meeting, nine fire calls, one special arrangement, four work details totaling 17 incidents. Some general information, we want to congratulate Ally Frichelle and Whitney Pepe on winning of the annual scholarship contest, they were here at their last meeting, and a shout-out to member Bobby Sandwal for another highly successful golf outing. Great job. Membership, they awarded Shane Newing with a certificate appreciation for fin, for finishing the fire school, which he was here at our last meeting. Regarding training, RIT operations with modern SCBA packs, 4th of July pre-plan and awareness. The chiefs arranged for neutral aid companies to come and assist with the fireworks coverage. North Brunswick Company 1 and 2, East Brunswick District 1 and 2, and Spotswood Fire Department and South River were all scheduled, and were at the Firehouse and helped us out with that night. Thank you very much for their service. Vehicle maintenance, Ladder 73 had some AC service, Engine 72, replacement of scene lights are ordered. Engine 72 exhaust pipe on, on order, and preventative maintenance for all four apparatus has been scheduled. Car 81 was serviced and air conditioning was charged, and Ladder 73 was pressure-washed to get hydraulic oil off due to previous leak. Some equipment maintenance, 10 out of 25 CBA bottles were sent out for hydro testing. New multi-gas meter delivery of four old ones repaired, one SCBA pack taken out of service due to frayed wire on the heads-up display. Flow testing for SCBA packs set for August 2nd. Hose testing is scheduled for August 20th, and the pump and ladder testing is being scheduled, waiting to hear back from the vendor. And just to let everybody know, members are always needed. Candidates interested in joining the Milltown Fire Department are encouraged to stop by the Firehouse Monday nights at 6:30, or email joinmilltownfire@gmail.com. Respectfully submitted, Stephen Pataia, Chief of the Department. Madam Mayor, my third report is from the Milltown Rescue Squad. For June, there were a total of 96 calls. Fifty-nine were in Milltown, 12 were on the turnpike, and 25 were mutual aid. We want to thank everyone who participated in our annual fund drive last month. If you haven't had a chance to mail in your donation, there is still time. Please visit www.milltownrescuesquad.org today. Our annual fishing rodeo was a great success, as always. We look forward to continuing tradition at the next 4th of July. We are still limiting transport of non-patients in ambulance until the Department of Health provides updated guidance, and there, we are continuing to wear masks on all calls. Hospitals are still requiring all patients and visitors to be masked regardless of vaccination status. Anyone who's interested in learning about joining the Milltown Rescue Squad or becoming an EMT should email recruitment@milltownrescuesquad.org to learn more. We're happy to answer any questions. Madam Mayor, my fourth report is from the Milltown 4th of July Committee.
Okay.
On behalf of the 4th of July Organization, it was an honor and a pleasure to put on our independent our Independence Day celebration in Milltown. We could not have done it without the support from our sponsors, which include many local businesses and organizations who have supported us throughout the year, and also the many volunteers that take pride in the work that they do to help us during the day. We would also like to thank Mayor Mayor and my fellow council members, our Borough Clerk and BA for all of your support and allowing us to have the day. Our Public Works Department for their amazing efforts in maintaining the sanitary and cleanliness throughout the day, and to our Police Department, Fire Department, and Rescue Squad for all of their hard work in providing safety for all those who attended. I would also like to thank the Milltown Fourth of July Committee for their hard work and dedication, and to our families for their patience and support they provide on that day and throughout the year. If you don't mind, I'd like to personally recognize our committee members, for without them, we would not have had this day for us to celebrate. They are Russ Einbinder, Neil Morada, Josephine Idavaya, Mike Finch, Denise Finch, Russ Tangen, Terry Walsh, Rich Revolinski, Rob Schuphauser, Laura Kahn, Jason Kahn, Melissa Elmeyer, John McNamara, and Lacy Lurle, and our honorary member, because he continues to help us even as our former liaison, Council President Phil Zambrana. Thank you. Finally, last but certainly not least, we would like to thank all the residents of Milltown. As we all know, these past, past years have been tough, but with your support kept this committee motivated, and we're very excited to put on this day for all of you and many of our out-of-towners that attended. Please continue to provide us with your continued support as we now start to work on next year's event. Thank you, and that concludes my report, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much. Thank you to all of the Fourth of July Committee and everyone that you mentioned. I seconded, it was a wonderful day, so thanks for all that you do. We, I, I'm sure we all had a good time. I certainly did, so thanks. And also, Dave, I, I heard you talking about all the fire vehicles. Um, I was glad to see on our resolutions that we have a resolution to get the new twenty-eighteen Chevy Tahoe as one of the chief trucks, which is one of our first purchases from our new capital plan to keep them, they've been, when we appreciate their time in effort to patch up the one that they had, so we're glad that we can get them a new, new vehicle to keep them safe, so.
Excellent, I agree. Thank you.
All right, now we'll move on to the Department of Utilities, Councilman James Peretti.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll start with the electric utility report. The substation was checked daily, vegetation was chemically treated, the contain, containment pumps were checked, and the operation of the transformer cooling fans was checked because of the recent hot weather we've been experiencing. A pole was struck by a car on North Main Street at Richter Avenue. Milltown Utilities provided hoses on all live conductors and evaluated the integrity of the hanging transformers so that Verizon could set a new pole safely. Utilities worked with our line contractor to install the new transformers, cutouts, crossarms, et cetera, to complete the job. The old transformers will be checked for PCPs and disposed of. And that heavy utility member had to stay through the evening to work on that to make sure it was safe, make sure Main Street was open the next day, so really big thank you to all the utility members who came and helped that day. Um, several branches were noticed in the overhead wiring during an overhead patrol, and subsequent, subsequently branches were removed. A broken crossarm carrying a main distribution circuit was discovered in a wooded area adjacent to the New Jersey Turnpike. Department members replaced that crossarm. Department members also assisted several contractors with some repairs and calibrations at our Elkins Lane pumping station. We're in the process of getting quotes for line clearance on Reva Avenue to decrease the likelihood of outages on that particular circuit. Finally, the Utility Department worked with the Billing Department to rectify billing issues and replace malfunctioning meters. Utility Department would like to remind the public that electrical meters need to be accessible to meter readers. Unfortunately, we're encountering properties with locked gates prohibiting access or vegetation in front of meters. The vegetation and overgrown bushes limit access, conceal potential business, and can cause estimated bills. There are other options, however. Residents can fill out monthly reading cards and submit them to the Billing Department, or residents can take pictures of their electric and water meters and send them to the following email address, A-H-A-M-M at milltownborough.com. That's A-H-A-M at milltownborough.com. Cards are available at the Billing Office or can be delivered to your mailbox upon request. Also, residents are reminded that they are required to post a warning sign on gates if a dog is in your backyard. Readers have unfortunately encountered aggressive dogs in the past because there's no warnings. Please be mindful of your Milltown Utilities Department. Now moving on to the Water and Sewer Report, along with all daily work orders, mark-outs, and emergency mark-outs, the Department has the following to report. The Water Department, with the help of the DPW and contractors, worked diligently before the Fourth of July to repair water main breaks on Lincoln and Joy Street, as well as Clay Street. The Water Department is still waiting for a delivery of new meters to continue the replacement programs. The order was placed in February, but the company is following up to locate the back order. Hydrant flushing is complete, and all hydrants with issues have, have been identified. Repairs will be made as soon as possible. The postcard for the annual quality water report has been delivered to homes. The report is on the Borough website, and there are hard copies of the report at Borough Hall, the library, the Senior Center, and the schools, and all other public spaces. Please check channel fifteen and milltownnj.org for additional water and sewer updates. And one additional, um, piece of information that I'll add to, as good timing with the Water and Sewer Report, um, Assemblyman Danielson for Milltown, he reached out to us as well as getting a, I know Mayor Mayor got a personal call from Governor Murphy, um, and Milltown was awarded an additional one million dollars for our water and sewer, um, lining and replacement project that we've been working for the past few years on, so, um, we're going to be getting that in for next year and to continue our efforts, um, to improve water quality throughout town. So, we'll be looking forward to working with our engineers and the Utility Department to, um, keep prioritizing different areas as, um, reports come in and certain sectors of town are identified, and making sure we keep taking off our backlog as we continue our water improvement projects. And that concludes my report.
Great, good news, James, and I know your committee is working with the engineers to pick the next spots of what to work on, and it's nice that we have a steady stream every year. I think it's over the last three years, we've gotten four million dollars from the state, which is great, because that's four million that the taxpayers aren't paying or the rate payers for the water and sewer bills. So that, that, that's good news, thank you.
Very good news, thank you.
And then we've had good feedback on the project that we, the first project that we did, Mike, which was Chestnut and Highland, right?
Great.
Yep, good.
Thank you, Madam.
All right, now we'll move on to the Department of Public Works and Recycling, Councilwoman Anna Newbauer.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Hope they're in here, me. Along with all kinds of trucks and bulk collection, the DPW has the following for course. Line casing has taken place on rural parts, and crosswalk casing has taken place on Main Street and will continue throughout the summer. Branches trying has taken place in the public park and will be ongoing throughout the season. Road repair patches are taking place around town as manpower and weather permit. Fire repair is ongoing. The street sweeper has been south and around town as manpower permit. The DPW has assisted utilities and contractors on the water breaks on Lincoln Ave. and Clay Street. The DPW is very busy preparing rural parts, placing barricades, no parking signs, and other garage jobs around the whole town just to prepare for a successful Fourth of July. The DPW has spent the first of July concluding the cleanup of the town after the holiday celebration. Recycling company, we received word from the champions and Pilbara that the latest day continued to occur on recycling days. Pilbara is doing everything in their power to hire more people to complete the roots. If you're serious and have a cycle issue, please contact one-eight-hundred-four-eight-eight-six-two-four-two. That number again is one-eight-hundred-four-eight-eight-six-two-four-two. Please contact them immediately and do not wait past Thursday evening. This will give the champions Pilbara a chance to investigate the issue. Please sign up for municipal dot com for more information, and please check channel fifteen and milltownnj.org for further DPW data. And that's my end of the report today.
Great, thank you. Uh, next we'll move on to the Department of Recreation, Councilwoman Margaret O'Donnell.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll begin with our library report tonight. Um, the library meets on, uh, second Tuesdays at six-thirty and in-person at the library. Um, at this meeting, we welcomed Samantha, Ms. Sam of Alilo as the Youth Services Librarian, and offered a big thank you to Barbara, Ms. Barbara Wright, um, for keeping up storytimes and other children's programming while the library was replacing Ms. Susan. Uh, many programs are ongoing at the library and should definitely check them out. Summer reading is among them, and that is going great, but there are lots of other programs for children and adults. Unfortunately, one, uh, piece of, um, not-so-great news is there was not as much money in the library budget, um, as the, uh, director had intended to move some financial, um, pieces around to try to offset the cost of, uh, roof, um, and we're not able to contribute, uh, but we're hoping that there will be, um, money and opportunity in the, in the next year, and definitely appreciate what was allocated in the, um, capital budget. On August sixteenth, the, um, winners of the Friends of the Library Photography Contest will be honored with a reception right there at the library. And the other couple of, uh, pieces of information, or one piece of information from the Friends is that Monmouth Museum passes are now available, um, at, oh, my word.
A little friend.
(laughing). A little visitor there, sorry, everyone. That was the biggest fly I've seen in a long time.
He's still alive.
Monmouth Museum passes, right, available. And the next, um, uh, meeting of the Library Board will be discussing going fine, free, and twenty-three, um, and, uh, the public is welcome to join the meetings. From the Recreation Department, uh, was, uh, provided this report by Director Ron Sepulon. Things are going well at the Borough Pool, and with the various camps, um, residents seem to be enjoying all the fun. Um, he encourages everyone to visit Community Pass for additional summer programming that will include Mad Science, Magic Explorers, um, the Young Rem, Young Rembrandt's Drawing Program, and a new youth basketball camp. And additional programming is constantly being developed and added. Uh, beach volleyball and yoga, um, have all gotten started, but I believe can all still take additional registrations. Those are two adult programs. Albert Avenue Summer Camp, uh, got started on Wednesday, July sixth. There are a hundred-and-seventy-three children participating, and the camp director, Amanda Vaca, is doing a great job with her staff and the new counselors in training. The campers made their first visit to, uh, the pool on Tuesday, July twelfth, to stay cool. It's a great opportunity for Milltown youngsters, uh, to have the beautiful, beautiful pool for their use. Uh, thanks to Councilman Dave Potter and Russ Einbinder, who provided, um, recreation with the July Fourth sponsor banners up on the fence to keep the Borough Pool shielded as we await, um, uh, wind screens that have been ordered.
They're actually in. They've been, they were bypassed by today and they're up.
Oh, see, I don't, I don't come by, um, the pool on my way here, so I didn't see that, um, but, uh, we'll have to check that out, and I hope all of our residents check that out as well. Um, but please, uh, help us continue to make Milltown Recreation a community in motion. Um, so that's from the department, but regarding the Recreation Advisory Committee, we'll be meeting Wednesday night, um, it's the, uh, third Wednesday, at seven p.m. here in the Borough Hall, and three of the items on our agenda include discussing the pool rates, which is something that Councilman, uh, Revolinski brought up as new business here at the council meeting, um, at our last meeting. Uh, restricting, uh, age use at Michelin Field to avoid baseballs being hit into the playground area, which again was something that was a resident concern that was brought up at the last meeting. And also, and I don't want to steal too much thunder from what I anticipate will be an audience comment later, but, um, also a kayak, we'll be discussing a location of potentially adding a kayak rack for residents who like to kayak on, on the water here. And, uh, finally, I'll just mention that the Historic Preservation Committee will be meeting on the Fourth Thursday, they meet via Zoom, and I appreciate that Councilman Peretti will be covering that meeting for me, um, while I'm on vacation. And that concludes my report for tonight.
Thank you. Uh, next we have the Department of Environmental Health and Social Services, Councilman Revolinski. Does anybody have a nipple?
No, I don't.
Okay. So I will just point out two quick things, then. Um, we are meeting tomorrow at six o'clock here with members of the Environmental Commission to discuss, uh, keep discussing, uh, plans for the Schwendeman Cabin, and so the Councilman Zambrana, Councilman Revolinski, and I will meet with them and we'll have some, uh, feedback for, uh, the next time. And, uh, what else was I going to say? One other thing I was, oh, I wanted to, since it's environmental, I wanted to thank the Environmental Commission, because I know they worked on the flood mitigation, uh, ordinance quite, quite a lot, so thanks to them for their input on the ordinance that we just passed this evening, so. Uh, next we'll have the Department of Finance Administration and Planning, Council President Phil Zambrana.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have, uh, two short reports, uh, no finance, uh, committee report tonight. Um, uh, I, uh, have a short report for the Revitalization Committee on behalf of Councilman Revolinski. Uh, the committee did meet this, uh, last Tuesday, which is the second Tuesday of each month, uh, at seven p.m. Um, now that Fourth of July is, uh, behind us, it's full steam ahead for Milltown Day, which this year will be, uh, the first Saturday in October, uh, which is October first. Um, Sunday, October second will be the rain date. Um, I believe festivities start at nine-thirty and they go to three, I'm not a hundred percent sure, but the, uh, committee is, um, as, as, as all committees, as you get closer to an event, our next committee meeting will be on the twenty-sixth, at which time we hope that, um, Jeanette or BACFO will be there just to go over purchasing protocols and processes. So, at that meeting, uh, we'll be assigning tasks, um, subcommittees as needed on, on what needs to be done, and for any folks that are out there that would like to, uh, join or step into that meeting, um, you can go, it's on the Borough Website. It is a Zoom meeting, so you can attend from, you know, from your house. Um, click on there, we'll let you in, and, uh, even if you, uh, can volunteer for that day, that would be really great. Um, and so that concludes my report for the Revitalization Committee.
What's the date for Milltown Day?
October first, first Saturday.
Okay, thanks.
Um, and then I have a short report from, uh, the Senior Center. So, Wednesday, July sixth, the seniors actually took a bus trip to the Milltown Library. Um, and they were met by librarian, uh, the library director, Charlie Luckenby, and given a tour of the library, and, uh, some exposure to, uh, some of the new and exciting programs, um, that are available there. Uh, Wednesday, July sixth was also the date at Water Aerobics, um, for seniors sixty-plus, um, can come and attend, and, uh, they're, they're actually being held on Wednesdays and Fridays from nine to ten, um, throughout July and August. And, uh, those interested are welcome to attend the classes, and no prior signup is required. On Thursday, July seventh, the seniors took a shopping trip to the Brunswick Square Mall. Uh, tomorrow, July nineteenth, at, uh, twelve o'clock, the Ladies Club will be having their monthly meeting and luncheon, all are welcome to attend. Sign-up on the bulletin board is, um, required. On Wednesday, July twenty-seventh, the seniors have a trip planned to go to Lambertville, New Jersey for lunch and some shopping. Um, I like to bring these things up because for most of the last year and a half, almost two years, there was no driver, um, and so I always like to bring up the fact that there is a driver. The driver is also available, um, to, um, uh, take anyone that has a doctor's appointment or that needs to take a trip to the food shop and run another errand. You do not have to be a member of the Milltown Senior Club, um, for that to happen. You just have to get in touch with Debbie Cuddy at the Senior Center, and she'll arrange for that to happen. Um, just a reminder, um, that on Fridays, the Senior Center closes at one o'clock, uh, for summer hours, um, but if anyone has any questions, uh, or needs to make, um, any arrangements or needs any other information, you can call Debbie Cuddy at seven-three-two-two-nine-six-zero-six-eight-one, or email her at D Cuddy at milltownborough dot com. You can always also check on the, uh, activities that are going on at the Milltown Senior Center by going online and navigating to the Senior Center, and you'll get the same information. And, um, that's respectfully submitted by Debbie Cuddy, and that concludes my report.
That's great. It's good to hear that the seniors are getting back out and around. Not only do we not have a driver, but we had the lockdown and the pandemic, so it's good to hear that they're getting.
They're taking advantage of that driver, yes.
And also good to hear that Milltown Day is moving. And also good to hear that Milltown Day is moving along, full speed ahead.
Full speed ahead.
We'll look forward to that. Administrator report, anything tonight today?
I do. Speaking of moving full speed ahead, so as you mentioned, the Fire Department was able to get that purchase underway, as well as some of the other departments are getting their purchases together. And we are waiting to hear back from the county when the roadwork will commence. So hopefully, we'll find out sometime this week and be able to report that at a later time.
Perfect.
We can expect that.
That's good. Good news. Thank you. Next, we'll move on to our engineer report. Mr. McLemone.
Yes, Madam Mayor. Just two items. First, a report on the status of Hagen-Potain supply chain is still delaying the submission or the delivery of materials, mostly concrete pipe. Looks like it's still two weeks out. We should have something hopefully back for the next meeting. Second is, there's a DEP requirement to submit a report by July the 22nd. It's called a Lead Service Line Identification Replacement Plan. This is due, and we've met with staff recently to go over the items that are required, and those are generally include various piece of information, including the Borough's Licensed Operator Mapping, yearly reporting and contact information with Borough's Administration, Borough Engineer, number of service connections, known lead services. They've also added galvanized services to the list, historical records, distribution maps, and utility records, and identification of various census populations, including elementary schools and preschools, which we're adding to the report. Letter will be sent to all homeowners, which basically assists them with identifying the type of service they have from their basement. And that should be out in the next couple of days, if not the next week or so. And there's one last question that he asked us, how are you going to finance it? Our recommendation is that the response be something like this, that the Borough intends to file an application to the IBank, which we understand there's financing for these projects. We're hoping and anticipating it's in a grant form that would be submitted and used for replacement of these services in order to offset and defray the costs for the residents in the Borough, and that there be a yearly program instituted once these grant funds are submitted. The report that we're getting from the head of the DEP is that, the commissioner, is that these funds are emanating from the infrastructure money that's come through from the federal government, and that they'd be in the form of grants for the Borough and to try to offset your costs. The lead service lines, you know, we've done work over many years, as you all know, to determine them. There's a certain number in town, and you know, the question is, are there, what's the number of galvanized services? Well, you probably have a lot more galvanized service than you have lead, and that's been added to the list. So this is not compelling the Borough to do anything. We'll write it such a way that this is what our goal is to be, and we'll see what happens. Grant funds right now, so what we would say is to begin submission, and that's in fact what the Commissioner of DEP told us to tell our towns to submit these applications right away and get in the list, so. Okay? So we'll get that submitted with staff by the 22nd of the month, so you keep in compliance with DEP.
Anybody have any questions for Mike?
Just one. So the time period that all lead lines have to be replaced, is that 10 years?
It's 10 years from probably about a year and a half ago, that's correct. The law is not clear, as I understand it, who has to replace it. It doesn't say the Borough or the residents, but I think the direction we've been getting is to try and see if we get some grants and offset the costs.
Exactly.
That's what our goal is.
So the information you're getting now is just preliminary to determine what's there. So Mike, just for the people that are going to get this letter at home, what are you looking for? Is it a form that they're going to fill out and return to the Borough?
Yeah. Essentially, we give them guidance, and it's been a joint effort by staff in our office to try and go down in the basement and take a look to determine what their service line is that comes in the house. If it's lead, there's certain characteristics of that service pipe as it goes into the meter, and we're just asking the residents to do the best they can to try and identify. You've got about 2,500 to 3,000 services. This cuts down the Borough's efforts of having to go into everybody's basement, which ultimately may have to happen. But that's the mandate from DEP. They want to know how many lines we have galvanized, how many lead, and there's not like, it's not like, please, it's like, we demand this, so we have to...
Correct. So it's first identify.
Yeah. We're gonna ask the Borough residents to help, and then if that doesn't work, we'll have to do another method.
If I may, regarding that checklist, or I don't know what the proper word to call it, is that that will be going out in the mail in a couple of days. It's also going to have a postage-paid envelope to make it easier, so we really encourage all the residents to participate, because it'll, the faster we can get through this process, so we try to facilitate it the best way we can.
Yeah, just so that they're clear, no action is required, other than we're just trying to identify who has what type of line, right?
That's correct. It's a mandate by the state. It's not like it's an option.
Okay. By the way, speaking of that, I haven't heard about our lead testing results in a while. Have we had any results lately?
I was advised that we passed the last two rounds, which is very encouraging, so we compliment you, you're doing well.
Good.
And the water operator has also reached out to DEP to see if our requirements can be lessened because of the two positive reports.
That's good. Good, good news. Thank you.
I have an unrelated question, but still fond of engineering. A resident who's on Highland, and I believe it would be south of Van Lou, was asking if more work would be done on Highland and that area regarding the water, and I believe that's part of our capital plans, but I just wanted to confirm so I can get back to the residents.
The next phase would be to complete the loop where we stopped and come around and tie back into Chester. That's the next phase, and we're doing some work in a couple of cases around town, but that's the next phase.
Okay, great. I'll let her now think.
Yeah, I was gonna say, Margaret, yeah, Councilwoman O'Donnell, we said we had the Phase 2 of exactly what Mr. McLemone just said, and we're also, for capital expense, we're, one of the part of our plan was to start Elkins Lane along Highland and work our way back towards that Phase 1 section as well. So pretty much all of Highland Drive is now going to be addressed.
Excellent. She'll be happy.
Anything else? All right. Borough Attorney, Mr. Njolo.
No report, Madam Mayor.
Okay. I lost my spot, but I think it's back to me now. Yes, it is. So just a couple of quick comments. I hope everyone's enjoying their summer. It's nice to see everyone out and around town. It was certainly nice to see so many old and new friends on 4th of July, so again, they did a fantastic job, and it just shows Milltown in such a great light. From, I had somebody that I've met the last two years, she comes in, she's a veteran, she drives on the American Legion float, and she's from Ford's, and she said, you know, I just have to thank Milltown and the committee for having us. She said, I drive in here on 4th of July, I see all the flags, I see all the people, and it reminds me of a Norman Rockwell painting. And she said, I really, really appreciate being able to come here. So it's nice to hear things like that. The other thing, I wanted to congratulate two teams from the Milltown Little League for winning the District 10 championship, and I know that some of them are playing in sectionals now, so we wish them well, and we hopefully can celebrate with them later on in the summer, so congratulations. And I think that's it. So now I'll move on to old business. Does any member of the council have any old business they'd like to bring before us this evening?
Madam Mayor, I had two items. I touched on them in the Recreation Advisory Committee Report, but just will reiterate them here, since they were brought up as new business. There was a concern reported about Michelin Field and the proximity of the outfield to the playground, and we're addressing that, both DPW and the Recreation Department, and that'll be a topic for discussion at the Recreation Advisory Committee meeting this week. And also, that the pool rates for residents will also be a point of discussion. Again, that was brought up as new business at the last meeting, and we'll be able to address it as a committee on Wednesday. I'll close the loop on that at our next meeting.
Okay. Sounds good. Anyone else? Hearing none, I'll close old business and move to new business. Does any member of the council have any new business to bring before us this evening? Seeing none, we'll close new business and open for audience comments. The public comment portion of our meeting is to allow the public to bring to the council's attention their concerns or comments. The council will respect the public's time by refraining any comment until the speaker has finished. It should be further noted that the public comment portion of our meeting is not structured as a question-and-answer session. If a public, member of the public has specific questions they seek answers to, an appointment can be made with the appropriate office during regular business hours. Please state your name and address for the record when you come to the podium. Go.
Mrs. Gary Poznanski.
How are you?
Good. How are you?
Good.
I appreciate the comments about Main Street, because it's wonderful. I moved here 21 years ago, and a lot of the reason we came here...
Excuse me, I'm sorry. Can you repeat your name and address for the record?
My name is Gary Poznanski, 31 Cleveland Avenue. A lot of the reason that we moved here, aside from the fact that my wife's grandmother was here, she was 101 and 1/2 when she passed away, but we got to be with her, was the beauty of Main Street, and I still appreciate. But there's, on South Main, for two blocks, it's terrible. And I know everyone knows the area. Crossing Main Street from the convenience store where Spirits used to be, the house that exploded, and what's going on with the Golden Lion. It's really a shame to see that, and it is a blight. We also have the blight that, I call it Berlin 1945, and I know that everything's in litigation there, but it is sad for someone to come through town. It's one thing if it's, if it's a town and it's the area where there's train tracks and there's businesses, factories and things, but it's the Main Street, and it's a shame. And I mean, to me, it's not acceptable. You guys are in a different position to know what can and can't be done, but, so in a sense of me being here, I'm an outsider, but to see this, and for people that I bring here, and they have, they'll ask what's going on, and it's sad. They had, in New York City in the early 90s, they had a broken windows program, and it worked well, where you don't accept the small things, because they lead to bigger things. We have a lot of rental properties in town, and I think a lot of people will see that are new to the town, and they think that we really don't care, and I know all of you do care, but they may see that people don't care, so I don't care. And I just wanted to bring that up. Like I said, I'm an outsider to this, but it does make me sad to see that. I used to tell people that this is the closest to Mayberry that I can be, and it still is that way, but there's a two-block span that is not. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Sure.
So I would just comment on that. That was the exact reason, Gary, that we had McKenna, what was her name?
McKinley.
McKinley Mertz.
Here this evening.
Oh, sure. And then I did want to mention that, and for a fact, that you should bring that up.
Yep. So it's, you know, it's preaching to the choir. We, so we started the conversation, that's why we're just beginning to look at that area. Ford Avenue unfortunately is a whole different story. The Borough really doesn't have much control over what goes on there, but we do have the Ford Avenue Redevelopment Agency meeting, third Tuesday of every month. That will be tomorrow night.
Tomorrow, 7 o'clock, right here.
Yeah, it's super frustrating. I mean, we've all been here through that whole Ford Avenue debacle, and you know, none of us wanted to see it the way it is, but...
That's what I want to say. I know all of you feel the same way that I do, because you can't avoid it, but I just felt like I had to say something.
Yeah, I know. There's certain things the government can do and certain things we can't. But what we can do is take a look and see about the empty spaces and things on how we can make it favorable and come up with a cohesive plan to get things done in certain places. So, thank you. Anyone else?
I got something.
Okay, good.
Kate Gil, 49 Herbert Ave. Picture this. 6:00 AM. I wake up, my kids are still asleep, my husband's there. I slip out of the house, I go in the car, I drive down to behind the post office, well, let's say behind the electric power station, and there's some kayak racks there, and my kayak is in its berth, waiting for me. And I go, and I slip in the water, and I go, two hours apiece off Westens Mill Pond. It's beautiful, there's otters, it's amazing back there, beautiful birds. Anyway, so this is, I'm asking if we can do a community kayak rack. It's been done many times before in New Jersey. I've got a list here of towns where it's been done, and they, their websites all say, you know, you register with the Recreation Department. Some of them are free, some of them are $50, $100 per rack space, you know, two rack spaces per house, so it's, and then there's no, you know, all you're looking for is a rack next to the water, adjacent, where you can slip off the rack, drag it in. There's no launch dock space required or anything fancy in the water. What else? Residents only, it usually is. It usually goes May 1st to October 31st in most of these New Jersey towns, after which kayaks would be impounded possibly, or by the police or by the Recreation Department, held until someone claims them, or you can sell them, pay for some lead lines if you want. Building it, constructing it, it could be an Eagle Scout project, or it can be, you know, any local volunteers. So I've already spoken with Rich and Margaret about it, and I don't know, I think that's it. I've got some pictures here of what it would look like.
Where do you launch from now?
Behind the post office. So I think there's a lot of people that launch back there.
Yeah, yeah.
So this just saves you sticking it on your...
Are you going to the Rack Advisory Committee meeting on Wednesday?
I heard about this. I'm gonna go. It's Wednesday?
It's Wednesday, yes, and it's already, it's already on the agenda. Ms. Gil and Ron have scouted out, I understand, some potential locations.
I don't know about Ron, but I have.
Sure.
And, yeah, we'll be discussing it further. Obviously, very thorough and impassioned presentation there. And there is being, it will be given very strong consideration.
Is that where things start? Is that the Recreation Advisory Committee?
At the committee level, and then the committee will come back to the full council. That would be good. Thank you.
We'll launch it by May next year, I promise.
Madam Mayor, I can tell you this, I had this same conversation with my wife a day ago, so, yeah. So I'm actually gonna put down money to get the second or third rental in there, so...
There's a buzz.
There's a buzz. There's definitely a buzz out there, and I think it's, yeah. But can we also, can you do it on both sides instead of just the one side? Because I know on the postal, because you can't get over the, if you want to go on the other side by Mill Pond, or...
That's all.
All right. Location.
We'll add that to the discussion, Councilman Potter.
There we go. There we go. I'm all for it.
Okay. Anyone else? Yes.
Lee Wise, 99 JFK Drive. In the past, I've brought up a topic, New Jersey Turnpike. The jungle, once again, is growing up there, over the wall, under the wall. We never got a drain fixed up there on my neighbor's property, and nobody's ever showed up.
Is that something that we asked the DPW committee to take a, who engages with the Turnpike Authority?
To be honest, Randy, Council President, former Council President Farkas was handling a lot of that, probably as utility slash DPW bike, and I'll work with Anna on that. That was the drain. I remember that drain conversation.
I think somebody has to, you know, we hope that the Turnpike Authority are good neighbors, but when they're not, we have to, you know, reach out.
And that's the overgrowth by the, the overgrowth by the Turnpike wall and by JFK?
By JFK, right?
Well, it's most of the wall.
Yeah, okay.
Like I said, all the vegetation on the other side, you know, they have a maintenance program. Used to be like every 10 years, they'd come in, clear cut everything, just about, and they're way overdue, you know, so...
Okay. Well, James will follow.
Yeah, I'll do that.
We'll have to answer you.
Second question, Borough Attorney, possibly, or whoever. The town owns many parcels of property in town. There should be deeds for every one of those parcels?
I, I mean, conceivably, yes, depending on what they own, how they own it, and how they got it, so, I mean, it's a nebulous question you've asked me.
Where are you going?
Well, this is the circle I'm stuck in.
Where?
Just with deeds and ownership. Apparently, the tax authority of whoever, recording stuff is very loose on a lot of things, and I'm finding this out now in my research of various things. And it's kind of like commercial property, LLC companies. It's like, if they merge or something, it just doesn't get recorded. It goes back to like, you know, it's just a succession thing.
Did you make an appointment with our tax assessor?
I've talked to a few people, and this is what I'm saying, is I'm going in a circle.
Unfortunately, we don't, none of us know in particular, but I think the tax assessor's office will be your first.
I've been there.
You have.
And that's why I said, that's why I'm trying to go a little step further, and apparently even the records in here don't go far. And others say, well, go to the county. Well, if I go to the county, what do I go with? Well, if I go to the county, what do I go with? So.
Do you want to let us know which properties in particular that you're expressing concern about, and we can potentially do a little-
It's various lots associated with the creek.
Okay. If you want to be more specific, it gives us more to work with, but-
Like I said, a block and a lot number, but it doesn't take you far. You know, because it shows up, owned by Borough of Milltown, and that's it. There's no book, no page, nothing to go by.
Well, we did have a damage to records, but if it's owned by the Borough of Milltown, then what's?
I'd like to know when it was purchased, from who, how many years ago.
Okay.
You know, it all ties together with a big picture, and that's what I said. Without the pieces, we can't make the picture.
Okay. I'm not entirely clear which pieces that you're talking about, so if you can give us, you know, more specific, like I said-
Well, you're researching River Railroad now, the Trestle. Trestle's a perfect example. That piece of property, as far as I know, is owned by Wells Fargo Bank, and the railroad was a right of way or easement. The deed that that bank refers to goes back to 1964, and it's an easement, or right of way, once again, but it kind of refers to, the railroad put the truck in, and once it was done using it, it reverts back to the original owner, which would be Also, or whatever, or Burger, or whatever, Boray. But it's strange that Wells Fargo actually has been paying the taxes on that property for years, and the other two pieces on the post office side are owned by Boray, and, you know, it's just a mess. That's what I said, that's what I said, trying to figure this out, and they all tie together.
No luck so far yet.
But, you know, so like I said, I'm just, you know, I've had a lot of assumptions over the years. I thought, boy, deeds, wow, you know, you just look them up, somebody buys something, sells it, it's not working out that way. So like I said, I, you know, I'd like to go further for benefit of everybody. My problem with a lot of this, once again, the pond, I'm concerned on the pond, who owns it? You know, it's saying Milltown owns it now somehow, that's contaminated. I don't want the taxpayers on a hook for whatever happens here. The dam, same thing. If something has transpired with that dam, I don't want the taxpayers on a hook for that dam, because that's going to have to be fixed, and it's going to cost millions of dollars. So.
Appreciate it.
I'm just trying to get it out there. Appreciate it.
Anyone else? Seeing none, I will close audience comments and move on to council comments. Does any member of the council have any final comments?
I do, Madam Mayor. You indulge me for a second. So with regards to that $1 million state grant for water lining improvements, I'll be remiss if it didn't give a quick thank you to utilities department, utilities committee, utilities department engineers who worked together to, you know, put in requests to the state for that, as well as put together tentative lists to then request to the state to show the cause for those, and a particular thank you to our council president, Zane Branna, who sits on both our utilities and our finance department committees, who really is at a key part of that junction between our monetary commitment, as well as, you know, meeting the need and receiving the need from the public for the utilities. So thank you to everyone working on that. And secondly, I just want to mention the lights at Gloria Bradford Park. So the, we've mentioned for a couple of years now that project coming, so be remiss if we didn't mention that, you know, they're in progress. Thank you, CME, and Musco Lighting, and our DPW department, everyone working on that. So if people are by Gloria Bradford Park on Field Two, by Softball Field, their lights are going up, and hopefully we're looking forward to maybe in a couple of council meetings getting a report of completion of work. But again, just would be remiss if you didn't acknowledge the large, very visible work going on at the park, so, thank you.
That's good to know. Yeah, we've been waiting a long time for that, and it'll be nice if it'll be ready for fall ball.
Can't see why it will not be ready for fall ball, yes.
So when it starts, instead of getting dark down there, you can have two games going on, the girls softball can play when it starts to get dark earlier in the evening, so that's a good thing.
And also high school softball. I know Spotswood's looking to come.
Oh, really?
Play a night game, yeah.
Wow.
Next year or two, so.
That's great.
Definitely going to work, so it's good.
One other comment.
Sure.
Just a kudos to Barbara Wright and other members of the Environmental Commission and our other environmental oriented groups that have been working on the pollinator garden in the Mill Pond Park. If residents haven't had a chance to go over there and take a look and take a visit, things are starting to fill in, things that were just little kind of sticks or green leaves sticking out are beginning to flower and look really beautiful, and they're also playing a part in our stormwater runoff and so forth, so take a look over at Mill Pond Park. Thanks.
It looks great. We thank them, and not only there, but the people that did the planters around town and the plants at the library. As somebody who does not have a green thumb at all, I'm very envious when I look at how easy they make it look, and it's not easy, so we thank them for all their efforts on that.
Just one thing, Madam Mayor, so I forgot to mention that tomorrow's the Ford Avenue Redevelopment Agency meeting, and for folks like Mr. Poznanski who want, as an outsider, if, it's great to come and ask questions and follow the history of Ford Avenue, which is long, it's really long. You know, I've only been on council for a couple of years. I was always told, and I've been here about 17 years, that that would never happen in my lifetime. It might happen in my lifetime, and the only thing that I'm looking forward to is to cleaning it up and to making sure that the impact is as low as possible on the residents, but we really don't have a lot of control there other than how many units are going to go there, because we need to meet our affordable housing obligation. That's really what it comes down to. But 7 o'clock in here, it's not a Zoom. See you then.
And we've tried to, even when I first joined, and we tried to get a history of, when we say it's in litigation, that doesn't mean it's been the same litigation for 20 years. It's been a variety of-
Fair, fair, fair different types of litigation throughout the years.
Dealing with a very legit-
Variety of different court systems, it's-
Yeah. But ideally, it would be nice to take a history, because I wasn't even familiar with the, you know, very beginnings, and it's going on, I think, over 20 years now, right?
Yeah, pushing 20 years.
So, and there's people that are moving into town that have no idea, so, you know, it might be, prove us to have a town hall someday or something, the Ford Avenue story of how we got to where we are.
Documentary.
Yes, the good, the bad, and the ugly, but, so that's something that may become in the fall we could do, because there's a lot of misunderstanding about it, there's, you know, it's gone on for so long that I don't think any of us even sitting up here know every little nuanced thing that happened 20 years ago that got us to where we are now, so. We'll look at what we can do to get everybody up to, up to speed, because we know a little bit more, but not that much more unfortunately, because it's sort of out of our hands. Anyone else?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I have some really good news.
Good.
As one of Milltown Mel's wranglers, I can tell you that Milltown Mel has been born months ago and is currently in transit. So Milltown Mel's heading to Milltown, everybody. So just end on that good news right there.
I'm going to have a new neighbor.
And you aren't going to have a new neighbor. Be nice. Like Groundhog says.
That's good news.
That's good news.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, I will close comments, and I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Potter, second by Councilwoman O'Donnell. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thanks, Anna. Thanks, everyone.
It's embodied, always.
By the way, the next meeting is a month from now, August 15. One meeting in July, one meeting in August.
No, she wants a ride.
She would need a couple, I mean, it's hot.